Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Henry Ford Board of Trustees special meeting. Today is August 5th, 2025. It is 7:08. I call this meeting for order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Al-Jehmi.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Dambrosio.
Here.
Trustee Petliczkoff.
Here.
Vice Chair Watts.
Here.
Trustee Zaher, here. Chair Mosad.
Here, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is citizen participation. Comments, we ask you to keep your comments directed. Don't name any employees of the college. And there is a three-minute limit on all comments. Our first speaker is Eric Rader.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Chair Mosad, interim President Gonko. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I know you have a very big task ahead of you in terms of picking a new president for Henry Ford College. I served on the last two presidential searches, the one we had in 2013 and then the one we had in 2018. And so my comments are related to my experience with those two searches. In both searches, we did employ an outside search firm that guided us on a competitive national search. And I think that that process serves us well as an institution. HFC has not only a regional reputation, but a national reputation. We are well-known. In my role as President of Local 1650 and in my role with the AFT, our national union, I serve on our Higher Education Policy and Program Council. I've seen the reputation that HFC has across the country. People ask about HFC. They know that we have a very good reputation academically and in serving a very diverse population here in Dearborn. So what my experience on the last two searches was that the search firms that we chose helped us, first of all, make sure they listened to what the Board of Trustees, as well as the search firm that the Board appointed in each of those times, what they wanted in a president for this college. Because we obviously want the best possible president we can get for this institution. A national search firm, or a presidential search firm, a company that specializes in this, will be able to work with you as the Board, as well as the search committee, I guess the committee that will be working on this, to develop a profile for the position, as well as a profile of the college and where you want to see the college go. There are a lot of search firms out there, certainly different ones that we've worked with over the years. But I think that the search firm will help us ensure that we have, first of all, a very good competitive process, but also a very neutral process. Because we're going to have both, I assume, we would have both external and internal candidates applying for this position. And the search firm can help the college manage that process, ensuring that there's neutrality, so that we're not favoring one type of applicant over another. And that includes in terms of racial, ethnic, gender, and so forth. And they have that experience and they can provide that expertise to the college to make sure this process is fair. But their primary job, and this is the experience I've had on the previous two searches, is that they really helped the college manage this project. Because it is a massive undertaking for this institution to search for a new president. And they were able to keep us to whatever timeline the Board decides is the proper one for this search. The search firm can work with the college to make sure that happens. I will say that it's also important in terms of confidentiality, because you have people applying for a very high-profile position. Oftentimes applicants are not in a position to be open about a search at the very beginning, because they're taking a risk. And the national search firm can help the college manage that process. So I will say that my own experience has been that the search firm, certainly, I can recall the most recent search in 2018. That search firm worked very closely with us. They listened to what the Board wanted. They talked to the search committee. And they conducted what I think was a very fair and competitive process. And so that's my own experience. I thank you for listening to these comments. And certainly, the faculty very much look forward to be involved in this process as it goes forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Rader.
Betsy Cohn, sorry.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to say a few words to you with this really important topic. My name is Betsy Cohn, and I'm an English instructor, a full-time English instructor here at the college since 1995. God help, you know, I mean, that's a long time. So, and I'm also the writer of the Higher Learning Commission Assurance Argument for Accreditation. This is my third time doing that. And one of the things that writing that report affords me is an incredible perspective on the college and to see how much really, really good work happens at all levels of this college. And that's a hard thing to see just from day-to-day work. So I'm grateful for that. And when I write the report, when I work on the report, I really find myself being very, very proud of this college and of the people that work here. I think that, you know, that pride and community starts at the top. I was on a presidential search committee two presidents ago. And what I observed there was that there were so many perspectives that came together, from external to internal, from faculty to support staff, to adjunct faculty, to administrators, to board members. And bringing all of those perspectives together in one place enabled us to have really rich discussions about the candidates and form very, you know, responsible, I think, rational recommendations to the Board at the end. This is, I don't go anywhere without the criteria for the accreditation argument. And one of them is from the section on Sustainability, Institutional Effectiveness, Resources, and Planning. And it's talking about effective administrative structures. It states, "The institution's administrative structures are effective and facilitate collaborative processes, such as shared governance, data-informed decision-making, and engagement with internal and external constituencies as appropriate." And one of the ways that we've really been able to show that is through our philosophy of hiring and the inclusion in the process that comes with it. And I think that largely, that sense of inclusion in the process and in the discussion, obviously, the final decision rests with the Board, but leading up to that, that that is one of the things that made it possible for former President Cavalluna to come in and really develop a sense of team at this college. And we were lacking that before he came. And so I think that he reinstilled that value in us. And we'd certainly like to continue that value forward in the presidential search this time. So I'm hopeful that the search will be inclusive and as full of care as the previous ones have been. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Bazey.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, President Gonko. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sam Bazey, and I prepared some notes so that I don't go over three minutes. Speaking today, both as a faculty member and a union officer, and I just want to share a few thoughts out of care for the values we all work hard to uphold here at our college: transparency, equity, and shared governance. I have some concerns about the idea of not using a third-party firm in our presidential search. Over the years, I've been here, we've gone the route for the last three presidential hires. And here is a reason for that. There is a reason for that. The firms bring experience, objectivity, and a broader reach. And that's helped ensure a fair and inclusive process. While our human resources team does incredible work supporting hiring across the institution, taking on something as demanding as the presidential search, would probably place a significant strain on their already full workload. Beyond the logistics, I also think it's worth thinking about how this process is viewed by the people we serve. I'm part of the Arab-American community, which makes up a significant portion of our student body. And I've had conversations over the years, honest questions from folks wondering whether our leadership searches are truly inclusive. And in the past, I've been able to say with confidence, this was not handled internally. A professional firm led the search. That's gone a long way in reassuring people that the process was open and fair. Changing that approach now could raise question, even if the intentions are good. And I'm aware some members of the Board have concerns about cost and the duration of the search. At a college like ours, where community engagement really matters, how we go about the process and how it is perceived both carry a lot of weight. So I just want to respectfully encourage the Board to consider continuing with a third-party model we've used before. Bringing in a qualified, neutral, and I stress, you know, a neutral firm, would help reinforce confidence in the process and show our ongoing commitment to fairness and representation serving the diverse community that defines our college. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Lynn Boza.
Good evening, Chairman Mosad and Board of Trustees, Dr. Gonko. I am Dr. Lynn Boza, President of the Adjunct Faculty Organization, AFT Local 337 at Henry Ford College. I am commenting on the HFC Presidential Search. Like so many adjuncts, I have work history beyond higher education. I worked for the state of Michigan for many years in vocational rehabilitation program, which was housed in the Michigan Department of Education. I was also an advisory board member in the Special Education Advisory Committee. I was also a fellow with the Educational Fellowship Policy Program. I have that experience that I bring to you. And I believe that my experience supports my belief in diversity and inclusion. I believe that a search for a Henry Ford College president should include a wide range of stakeholders coming from the community at large, the business community, the college, college leadership administrators, the college senate, college labor leaders, college staff, and students. A diverse and inclusive group will ensure that many interests are represented in the search. The wider and more inclusive the group is, the more stakeholders will feel like they had a voice in the selection of this important leader. I believe that using a search firm would be the best way to accomplish such a search. Thank you for me having the opportunity to address you.
Next item is Presidential Search Process.
Thank you, Trustee Zaher. So I'll open the floor to discussions on the process. But before that, if we can get an update from procurement, from Don Murray, and also the chair of the current committee, as far as what work have we done since we have embarked on looking for a search firm for this process?
Trustee Watts. Yep, could I have Mr. Murray come on up? He can come and speak to the latest updates as of today.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for those that don't know, as of July 7th, we issued an RFP for the search firm to help us find our next president. During that time, since then, we accepted questions from prospective firms and we supplied answers to them as well. Final responses from them are due on Friday, the 8th, at 4:00 p.m. So some rough numbers, we had requested a notice of intent form if they plan to or not plan to participate in our process. So we have 23 firms that have confirmed they are planning to participate, and we only had three noes. Some more numbers, we invited 26 different firms that we had either experienced with or we had heard about. And of those 26, 12 of them said they will participate. This opportunity was also posted on BitNet Direct to kind of be out there for everybody to see. So we also received confirmations from 11 other firms saying they would participate. So once we get the responses on Friday, I'll put them together, give them to the ad hoc committee so they can review them and then come up with their finalists and set up interviews on their timeline. Just the timeline we kind of provided at the time of issuance of the RFP was the evaluation of proposals would be between August 8th and August 20th. In the week of September 1st, we would do interviews with the finalists, most likely remotely. And then we would award at the September 15th Board Meeting.
Sorry, Dan, did you say that, I forgot the number you said, 11 or 12? Did you say 11 or 12 firms have expressed that they will submit a bit or already have submitted a bit?
We have not received any actual responses. But 23 firms confirmed that they would like to, they intend to participate.
Sorry, what was the 11 number you said?
12, I'm sorry, that was confusing, I apologize. So 12 were firms we invited, and 11 were firms that found the opportunity online.
Well, first of all, thank you for everyone who came to the meeting today and to my fellow trustees who came as well after we planned this last week. Look, as the trustee who's on this ad hoc committee and also was the force behind asking for this meeting, I'll say this. I am not, I'm interested in us accelerating this process and taking a little bit more control of it. It's literally the only job that we hire. It's literally one of the reasons that we're elected. It's in our bylaws as one of our core purposes. So we have the ability and the talent and the intellect and the know-how to do this and take it on. I'm not interested necessarily in eliminating the presence of a search firm. I have been skeptical of it, but I'm not interested in eliminating it for reasons of security, information, and those kinds of things. I am interested in making sure the scope is perhaps not just all out there, pretty limited, so that we can move pretty quickly. I also don't think, we have a meeting on August 25th. The window, as Dan said, closes on August 8th. We should have enough time before August 25th, as an ad hoc committee, to look at those applications, talk to anyone that we need to talk to, and make recommendations to our fellow Board members so that we can make a decision on August 25th. Save ourselves three weeks. There's no reason that we have to wait, I think, until September to make a decision on that. So that's where I stand on the search committee. I'll be asking tonight, obviously, we have a lot more discussion to have, but I'll be asking tonight that we sort of, if it needs to go through a resolution, but that we have a resolution, or not a resolution, sorry, a motion, that we go ahead and basically move and make a motion that we're going to evaluate these applications. We can do that next week and have conversations with our Board, with our fellow trustees as the ad hoc committee, and then make a recommendation to be voted on on August 25th. As far as the scope of that, I think we'll discuss that as well. My own point of view is that we should use a search firm to post the job in all their networks and applicable websites, intake the applications for security information purposes, and then give access to trustees and anyone authorized by us through necessary search committees. We don't, and of course, these search firms will have rubrics that they might offer us, but we, at the end of the day, will decide what those rubrics are as we move forward as a full Board. But we can do all that pretty quickly. This is all about just preparing the ground for the process. I'm trying to get us to a point quickly where we can start accepting applications. There's no reason that needs to wait until September, accepting a firm, and then who knows how long it takes after for them to post a job. We could have the job posted. We don't have the job posted, right? So we could have the job posted by Labor Day or before. That's the first thing I'm going to ask for, that we do this and have this thing decided by August 25th. I'm a little concerned when I hear people say like neutral and neutral. I think that we're pretty neutral. I think the seven of us are the ones who end up choosing this person. So that's going to happen whether there's a search committee or not a search committee, or a search firm or not a search firm. Eventually, it comes to the seven of us. I'm sure everybody is aware of that. So I believe that the seven of us are neutral enough and have the requisite intellect to figure out who to pick for the next president. The second thing is, we do have, as I'm sure all the trustees know, we are contractually obligated through a CBA with 1650 to include seven members of their choosing in a search committee. So we're contractually obligated to form a search committee and then have seven of their members who they choose to be on a committee. Now, without getting into legal questions about whether that goes over our bylaws or whatever, let's just assume that we have to do that. And what I'm also going to be recommending is that we direct our, President Gonko, or sorry, request from President Gonko, that she directs 1650 to pick those people at their next faculty second meeting, which is on September 10th, I believe. And so that we get those names quickly, so that again, we can move forward with this process swiftly. I think them preparing their members to do that at their next meeting is not a big ask, especially since it's a month away. And we get those names the next day, and we can move forward with that part. And finally, since we have to create a search committee contractually, then we should also contemplate together tonight, hopefully, who else, what other types of people we might want to be on that search committee. And then the process that I would suggest for that is that we direct, whether it's HR or some other part of the college, to create some sort of intake for that. So let's say, for instance, we say, you know, we want to have three, two, three, whatever, two alumni on the search committee along with the seven faculty members, that, you know, we're only going to, that people have to express interest. So they'll have to, you know, go to a website, fill out a form. And we intake all those names. And then people get on that committee after they've showed interest, and each individual be approved by a majority vote of the trustees. So people get on the search committee because they showed interest. We looked at their application, why they want to do it, and we approve them. I think that's pretty reasonable, too. And so that will avoid people just getting on the search committee because they know somebody. That'll avoid, hey, Trustee Zaher gets two people on the search committee. I don't like this process. I like everybody being on the search committee because they're approved by a majority vote of us. I think that we can do all that and move this along quickly. And then, once we have this search committee, let's, just so that it's clear, our obligations to create a search committee with, through our collective bargaining agreement with 1650, and really, just generally as a search committee, is that this search committee gets to screen and recommend applicants. So what that means to me is that they get to look at all the applications and as a committee, through whatever process they might have, that they recommend. At the end of the day, though, just so that everyone is clear, at the end of the day, we will, at the seven of us, decide who the finalists are, who we, we're also going to see all the applicants, who gets on this thing. So it's important to understand that from the beginning, that the seven of us were elected to do this. And while it's important to get input from many different parts of the community, this is one of our core jobs. And so we have to take kind of control of it and control of the process and everyone understand that this is what we have to do. And recommendations from people are very important, but they're just that, they're recommendations. So in other words, a search committee cannot, you know, say, we don't want you to interview this person. They can recommend people. And they cannot eliminate people, if that makes sense. So to me, those are the processes and the things that we should go by. And in that case, we can do this quickly. I still believe that we can have a president before the holidays. That's important to me. We have a lot of issues coming up early in the next year. And I think it's important to get a president in here quickly enough to take on those issues so that that president owns everything quickly. And we can move on from this dragging this on, I think is not good for anybody. And it's not something that we need to do. So those are the three things that I'll be proposing tonight, Chair Mosad, when the time presents itself to propose those things through motions.
I'd like Trustee Petliczkoff. Go ahead.
Okay, I've got a myriad of questions. One, Trustee Zaher, what urgency are, you keep referring to you need to do this quickly, and we have urgent things coming up that I'm unaware of. So what is it that is pushing you to feel this urgency?
Sure. Well, as a general matter, I think, just as a general matter, I think that the shorter interim period you have, the better, right? As a general matter. An institution like this, you don't want to deal with uncertainty. You don't want to deal with who's the next leader going to be. You do that, you address it quickly, efficiently. So I think as a general matter, I don't have to make the argument for that. But for instance, something specific is, as of next February, is the earliest that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I'm right, as of next February, is the earliest that the new CBA can start to be negotiated. And I think that that should be under the auspices of the next president. And am I correct in that date? Am I correct in that date?
They begin a lot earlier, right?
They can be earlier.
Oh, what's the earliest it can be?
They can be longer.
Okay, great. So I assume, I don't think there are plans to start it today, but it could start pretty soon. And so I think that the next president, or the permanent, let me just say, the permanent president, should be dealing with issues of the CBA, as that president is going to own that. They're going to negotiate it. They're going to have to deal with the consequences of it. It would be good if they negotiated it, since they're going to be the president for the next three, four years, however long, five years, maybe 10 years, that they're dealing with that, maybe negotiating the next one. So that's one concrete issue that I think should be, that the permanent president should be dealing with. I don't think it makes much sense for, if an interim president is, let's say, going to be interim for six months, that they're dealing with that kind of issue and then handing it off to a permanent president who maybe would have done it differently. And obviously, when we're electing, or sorry, selecting a permanent president, we're selecting someone to carry their vision for the next five, 10 years of this college. One of those core things will be, what is their vision of dealing with labor and creating a contract and all these things? So that's one concrete issue, besides the general idea that I think the shorter an interim period, the better for all of us as we move forward and do this deliberately, but efficiently and quickly.
Okay, a couple points. Trying to get, and it's in our bylaws, that we want the best candidates. Rushing a process because you think it's expedient for your purposes, of your vision, isn't necessarily in the best interest of a lot of people who want to make sure that we have the opportunity to be thoughtful about who we select and that people across the nation have an opportunity to apply. You push things too quickly, you may lose the opportunity of other candidates who are either already enmeshed in a job and are not prepared yet to move that quickly. You're talking about the middle of a college terms, basically, that you are trying to fill this position where people are not ready to jump, which is why usually, most college presidents are usually found in the spring months when the semester has ended and are hired during that time period. Not saying that it can't be done, I'm saying why. Number one, contracts can be revisited. Number two, contracts could probably be delayed if necessary, if they know that within the next six to nine months there is going to be a permanent president put in place. I would prefer that we make the best decision involving the staff and employees who are actually going to have to interact with this person, to have the opportunity to meet with, vet the person that they, we are not going to be dealing on a day-to-day basis with this individual. They will be. They need the opportunity. The last two searches that I was here on campus for allowed for candidates to come, to be interviewed by the community at large. We had a very extensive timeframe in order to allow them to see and hear and feel those people who they are going to be working side by side with at some point in time. You're wanting to rush this process through one semester, not even, because you're looking at, you have a different perspective than I do. But I've been through this, and I understand the importance it is to the college community to be involved and engaged in this. And you make a bad choice because you want to rush it through. They are the ones who are going to have to live with that decision. I would prefer that we are thoughtful on this process and dedicate the time necessary, and that it deserves. I don't see how rushing something through and then telling them, well, it's our decision to make at the end of the day, because to me, my true role of being elected here is to represent all of them, not just hire the college president. My job, my duty, my obligation is to make sure that I am representing their needs, their thoughts, their work environment as well. It's not just that it's my obligation and role to hire someone. And I've had to do this a number of times now. So I'm very uncomfortable with your, just wanting to rush this through as quickly as possible, because I'm not really hearing a good reason, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, for why you want to rush it through. And I think that we can, as an ad hoc committee, I was on the last search firm ad hoc committee. We asked the right questions of those search firms, and that takes time. You have to interview these people. We've already heard there's 23 people who are potentially interested. I know that we interviewed five or six, after we reviewed all the applicants, we vetted them down to five or six and had to interview them before we were able to. You want to... You want to do this in a three-week process? I'm very uncomfortable with this sense of rushing everything in order to meet a timetable that satisfies you. I'm, I'm not, uh, in favor of, um, taking shortcuts, so to speak, in order to meet a deadline that's in your head.
Thank you, Chair Moszibah. I am very concerned about some of the language I heard tonight. Changing the process, where did that come from? Avoiding a third-party model? Where did that come from? Just because we've served on search firms, search committees before, doesn't make us any smarter, doesn't make us more accountable to this college? I, myself, also, just like President Rader and trustee Petrikov served on those last two, uh, search firms, but that has nothing to do with the issue at hand tonight. This is, this is the board that will be choosing our next leader. When we start using words like "they," who's "they"? Last time I, last time I checked, we're all hawks in here. Uh, we're all, I mean, this is, this is a beautiful summer night, and we're in here because this is very important. Every, everybody in this room is here because this is a very important decision that we will be making. So when we start saying "my" and "yours" and "they," that's very concerning. We need to all come together and move forward in the best interest of this institution, not what I believe is best, or what you might believe. We, we gotta stop using the language "my," "they." There is no "they" here. We're, we're all here for one common reason. The word I heard at least nine times is rushing, rushing, rushing. This is the first time, not just at this institution, I, I've been involved in many other boards where, you know, you hire, you evaluate, you move on past leadership, whatever, and nobody's rushing anything. I don't hear anybody saying rushing. There's a good argument that why we need to move a little faster than, you know, what I've been seeing coming through the emails. I'm very concerned, the opposite of rushing is stalling. I'm very concerned, I don't want to spend too much on, on that, on that point, I'm very concerned what I've, I've heard early on in this process, what I'm starting to see in the language coming across the emails from, from, from multiple avenues that I, I'm sniffing it out there, there, you know, that we're looking to stall this process for whatever reason, for whatever reason. The first, when we both served on the search firms before, we, we never said sometimes next July, or sometimes next June, we started the process, this is the process, we hire, we put RFPs, we hire a search firm, we put a committee together, and we move. But what I'm assuming, and I'm not going to get in, try to get into his head, uh, what I'm assuming is my colleague, trustee Zar, is seeing the same thing I'm seeing, that there's something out there, vibe, that, let's call it the way it is, stretches out as long as possible. There's no need for it. This college right here has been, has been, been here for like, you know, almost going on 100 years now. And we celebrated 80 years a few years ago, going on 100 years. This college will exist way, way, way past when all of us are gone, no doubt in my mind. We have to make the best decision the next few months on the next leader. Under my tenure, we hired a leader here that, in my opinion, saved this college. Then the last time we hired somebody, kind of brought everybody together. This college is solid right now, we're solid. We need, we need to, we need to speak that language that, you know, we're in a good place right now. We just want to, you know, we just want to choose our next leader, whoever it is, if that person's in this room, outside this room, in the state, outside the state, whoever it is. From our speakers, I, I was starting to sense like, whoa, whoa, I didn't like that language, period. So that's why we're here, let's have a good discussion, so all get on the same page. It's going to be very important that, you know, this great faculty here and administrators understand that we're all on the same page moving forward. Let's not get into back-and-forth argument, whatever. Uh, yeah, let's set some dates and move forward, and we'll go from there. Thank you, Chair Moszibah.
Thank you, trustee Barry.
Thank you, everyone, for speaking. I think there was a concern brought up, uh, in one of the board meetings, is the length of the process, and, and trustee Barry had mentioned it. There was an expectation that this will drag on for a long time.
People get closer to my mic. Yeah, thank you.
That this will drag, drag on for a long time, and what, what I'm hearing is, we're trying to expedite the process, not to cut corners with the process. There's no, you know, I would be against any, anything that would cut corners or not get us the best candidate. I mean, the goal is to get the best candidate. But we need to expedite the process because, you know, when you have an open position for a year, um, that creates uncertainty, and, and we want to eliminate that. We all want the search firm, and we said on this discussion, we're just talking about scope, the scope of what the search firm does. The search firm, in my opinion, maybe a little difference from, uh, trustees Zar, Benala, is they're going to find us the best possible candidate, um, and I disagree. I mean, if somebody's looking for a job and want to do upward mobility, there's no set time for them to look for another position. Now, you could select a job and, and as a part of the agreement, say, you know, I'm going to start at this time. So you could find a person, but select your time, and I'm not saying that's going to happen. But in saying that, we, we want to expedite the process, we want the search firm to find us the best possible candidate, we want them to be able to post and, uh, reach through their connections and get us the best possible candidate. I would, my difference would be, I would still like them to make a recommendation, but it doesn't mean we have to follow it. They would still give us a recommendation of who they think should be our top candidate, but at the end of the day, we're the one that's making the choice. So if, if let's say, we agree, they give us 10 recommendation, and we say, you know what, there's one additional candidate that should be there, that's still the choice of the committee. But we want them to give us recommendation. I think all of us want to expect the process, we don't want to, we're not trying to, uh, make it go faster to, for the wrong reason. And we should be open to it, because for me, I was really, really concerned when it was brought up that it takes four months for an RFP, it might take till summer to get a candidate. You know, maybe because I come from an environment where things move faster, and, and I came from a government agency, which they normally go slow, but in this case, we're slower than any government agencies that I've worked on. So let's expedite the process, let's take into consideration what's being recommended, and then it's okay if we compromise. I still need trustee Zar to kind of, on the committee, I understood the 1650, uh, seven members, I wasn't sure about the other members, you know, maybe you could elaborate later on, what, what do we mean by that? But we, we would still have a committee, uh, but I would not want a 30, 40-member committee. I mean, I personally think that's, that would just make the process so much harder. You, you want to be nimble, but fair. You know, you don't want to, uh, if you have too many people, it just, it will be, uh, it will drag it till the summer. You want to get the right people to be a part of the committee, but not everyone and their cousin. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
Um, so it was brought up about this stalling, and I don't know where this notion came from. Um, as chair of the ad hoc committee for the search firm, um, it was presented that the email was sent from Mr. Murray about some of the questions that the firms had that I thought were quite inappropriate. Um, and I had shared my responses with the full board, so the full board was aware that I did not think that the search committee's questions, or the search firm committee questions, should have answers that as a board, we have never discussed. So my response is, so when I sent forward that to everybody here, it was to let you know for full transparency, that I was not willing to go ahead and give search firms things that were quite honest, not their, um, would give them a leg up, number one, if they had internal candidates. Number two, as a full board, we never discussed, we never discussed what that salary would be. That is something between the board and the potential presidential candidate would discuss. Nor was whatever this deadline was of June of 2026. That was not something, and I said, I would refuse to go ahead and put that in there. So my responses were so that the seven of us would be able to dictate those answers, so that the search firms were not going to use that nefariously, because they had an internal candidate. So I shared all of that with all seven, all, all six of you, so that there was full transparency that if there was something nefarious with the search firms, that they were not, again, I can't speak about the full board, that's for the seven of us to discuss, not for search firms to go ahead, because they have internal candidates that perhaps they have relationships with. So if that was viewed as stalling, I viewed it as being completely transparent. I don't know who those search firms were that asked those questions. I was extremely uncomfortable that they were so brazen to ask us, um, those questions. So my view, when I forward it, was this is transparency, and apparently it, it was the opposite of where it looked like it was being stalled. I would hope that if that was the perception, that I would receive a phone call or an email, because my intent to forward that to you guys was say, if you have questions, let me know, but this is what's coming. And this is how the response was. Now, in terms of the decision to select a search firm, that was discussed a few months ago, that our deadline was going to be September. We had hoped for August, um, I think we were off about a week, um, where we couldn't get that in. So again, the notion of stalling is not at all. If anything, it was the, let's take advantage of the summer months, and if we can get this done before the semester began, that to me would be a bonus. So that's number one. I think number two, we, at least for me, I always want to make sure that there isn't a specific date, because I know we are very cognizant of saying, we want the best candidate for this college, not by a certain date. It is when we say this, and that's part of the search firm, is we can then interview them and say, what is your scope? What is your timeframe? And so with that deadline being on Friday, the next step would to say to the full board, what are those questions that you want us to ask the search firm? Is that something that is important to you? What is that scope? Are you hoping for?
How quickly can you get it done?
How quickly would you like that to get done? That is something that, again, as a board, we can ask those firms for. And also, what is your community outreach? And I think I have heard like that, that the last, uh, search, presidential search committee was too large, and I've heard that from a lot of people. So again, back to like, what is that sort of number that we think would be reflective of the full community, but be efficient? And I think that's where I come in, what is the efficiency, but without then compromising the quality? I think it doesn't have to be quantity, it has to be the quality of that. And I would then suggest that because we used the previous, uh, RFP for the search firm, and we kind of tweaked that, um, my recommendation would be for the next, uh, metric for the search firms, is use that same thing with feedback from everyone here, to say, this is where our metrics are for the search firm, what is important for you? Because what's important for me may not be the same thing that's important for trustee Barry, or trustee D'Ambrosio, but what is that? So that we can feel confident, saying my voice is part of this process, just like all of your voices are there as well. Again, it's not the quantity, it is the quality that I think we need to be mindful of. And the fact that it doesn't have to be rushed, it doesn't have to be quickly, it doesn't have to be stalled, it has to be done correctly. That's it.
And I will say that the, the search firms, that's their job, that's what they're supposed, that's what we're paying them to do, is to tell us, they have experience in this over and over and over again, and they are the ones who can help guide us. We just have to ask the right questions to get the search firm that fits the initial needs. So if, if we, if we want to ask the question, how quickly can, can, and effectively can you produce? And they have to show you that they have, uh, the ability to deliver in a, in a timeframe. But setting a, a drop dead date i- isn't helping anyone, because then, if you don't meet it, then you're in violation of your own motion, and that, and then, and then you feel compromised, one way or the other, that you deliver, and you might not be then producing the best results by doing that. So you, you have, you do have to have some flexibility and some leeway given. I think when you talk about that in the answer to those questions that were given, um, to the firms that had asked the question in the first place, and I also had questioned, uh, Dan Murray about why would they ask these questions? I think that July date of 2026 was the furthest out that he could give. It didn't mean that we have to accept it, or that we have to hire a firm that says that's what I'm going to deliver. That's within our purview to find out from the ones we interview, what, how quickly can you do this? And, and are you able to deliver and show us proof that you have access to the right organizations to find the best candidates and still put it in a, a certain timeframe? These dates aren't stall dates, they were just the nth game period to be a placeholder for the questions that were being asked by a couple of firms.
Yes, one thing I want to get out of the way is, uh, we definitely need a mechanism to get input from the community. I haven't heard that yet tonight. Uh, I know, uh, we've always had, I mean, a couple of search firms ago, and last time, I believe, we asked each board member, bring a community member. I like what I heard in some of the discussions with my colleagues, that that member needs to be approved by the board, and I'm good with that, but we need to set up a mechanism. I used the word "stalling" earlier, I kind of concentrated on the emails that were coming through. I guess I was just trying to keep it clean, because I didn't want to go back to discussions we had early on, which was, it was point-blank obvious where it was going. So I am thankful to trustee Zar for bringing us together tonight, so we can clear the air on perceptions, you know, trustee D'Ambrosio might be thinking, or not, what trustee Ojami is thinking, or not, let's, let's clear the air, get on the same page, and move forward. I keep hearing tonight that we want the best possible candidate. Of course, we want the best, best possible candidate from a pool, I think there was one time, it was 68 applicants, one time it was high 30s, low 40s applicants. Henry Ford cars, like I heard earlier, is yes, people, people want to come to this institution. All we're doing, all I heard trustee Zar say is, we want to start that process sooner than later. I didn't hear him say, we need to rush the pool. If, if, if we award one of the companies on September 15th, that's starting the process, because if we get into October, then all of a sudden, November, then it's the holidays, then what? Then that's, you know, that's what I want to try to avoid.
I don't want to get into being, uh, taken aback by a couple of comments about trustee Petrikov, a couple of times, you, you were addressing me, you said "your interest." I, I don't have any personal interest in this, okay? It's not about what I personally want. I believe that what I'm advocating for is the best, um, result and case scenario for the community and for the college. I don't think there's anything stopping us. The window for RFPs closes on Friday at 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM, something like that, I think. So there's no reason why we cannot immediately get on those things and suggest a firm to work with in a scope that we discuss, uh, at our August 25th meeting. I, I don't, I just, I just don't see any reason why we can't do that. Whether there's five, uh, applications, or 10, or 15, I just don't see any reason why we can't do that. We have the ability to do that. Uh, I am concerned, again, with this process taking longer than it needs to take. I don't think it serves any, I think we can all agree, assuming everyone has good intentions, which I do, which means everyone wants the best person, and everyone wants to do this effectively. I think we can all assume that, without trying to impugn the interests of anybody. Once we get past that, then I think we can all agree that the quicker we do this, the better. That doesn't mean we're rushing anything, it means we're not dragging things out when we don't need to. There's no reason that we cannot select a search firm for whatever scope we decide in our August 20, that's three weeks from today, and the window closes on Friday. That leaves more than two weeks to look at all the applications, talk to whoever we need to talk to, and make a presentation to the board, talk to board members ahead of time, and make a presentation and a decision on August 25th. That will allow the job to get posted hopefully pretty quickly, and by the time the holiday- That will allow the job to get posted hopefully pretty quickly, and by the time the holiday, by time Labor Day is over, the job is maybe posted or a few days after that. There's no reason we need to wait another month. That's my point of view pretty strongly. And let me say, when it comes to search committees, look, we have, again, we are required by our bargaining agreements to have a seven-member search committee that the Faculty Senate chooses. Or sorry, I shouldn't say that. To have, to have seven members that the Faculty Senate chooses on a search committee. Let me say that. So I, I'm suggesting that we, and I don't think that's unreasonable either, their next meeting is September 10th, am I correct? Their next meeting is September 10th, that we, and that's still five weeks from today, that we direct or request that the President direct the Faculty Senate to let their members know ahead of time that, hey, September 10th, we're having these elections, it's done through elections, I assume, from the, from what I read in the collective bargaining agreement, that they, that they let those members know five weeks ahead of time, starting tonight, that, hey, we're doing this on September 10th, which means that night we'll have those seven names. I don't see, because if that, they hold their meetings monthly, unless we're asking them to hold a, a special meeting for this purpose, that means we might have to wait till, they might, what if they say, hey, we, we're not ready, now we have to wait till October until they have their seven members? So I'm asking that we request that the President direct them to do this at their meeting. I don't think that's unreasonable, on September 10th. I don't think that's unreasonable at all. Okay? And, and even though they might, I, I would like us to do that officially, so that it's just clear. Not that we don't think they'll do it anyway if they say they will, that's not the point. But to do it so that it's on the record, so that, so that we know that it's going to get done, which means in the evening of September 10th, after their meeting, we'll know who those seven people are. As far as the rest of a search committee, again, we, there's two mechanisms to take input from the community outside of the seven that we have to have from the Faculty Senate under the collective bargaining agreement. There's two mechanisms to take input from the community. One of them is to add them to this search committee and decide who, what those profiles of those people are going to be, and how we put them on. I feel very strongly that in order to avoid politics, in order to avoid favoritism, that nobody gets on that committee unless they are approved by majority vote of us. I don't think that's unreasonable or crazy either. And, and that we have a process, and that somebody has to show interest, so you have some sort of input intake process, I mean. You know, they have to send, they have to send their letter of interest to an email address, or a portal on our website, whatever. Because I want somebody to be on that committee, because they want to be on that committee, not because somebody asked them to go be on that committee, that's not the way this should work. That's one mechanism to get input from other members of the community. The other mechanism is you don't have to widen the search committee past the seven members that we are contractually obligated to have with the Faculty Senate. And other people just come to meetings like this, and they give their opinions on presidential candidates and whatever. That's another way to do, that's, those are the two ways to do it. So we can either expand the search committee that we have to form, or we don't. But we don't have to. Now, I, I can see a lot of reasons why it would be a good idea to do that. I don't want it to be too big. I think we should have a discussion tonight about who, and then we, we can do it through a motion, about who, you know, what the profiles of those people would be, you know, two alumni, one person from the government, whatever, whatever it is. And we decide that, we can always add to it or change it later, but at least get started on what that should look like. And then direct our HR to set up, again, some sort of intake process. Send an email, fill out this form on this website that says you want to be part of this. And then agree, and then also agree via motion, that people get on that committee because we approve them. And hopefully by our September 15th meeting, we would have gotten enough applicants for that part of the search committee that we can start adding people to it. And we can always add more people later, but at least we can get started. And then, you know, the search committee will have its own process that we can direct as well, pick a chair, decide. But at the end of the day, the search committee's job, just so again, so everyone's clear, is to look at the applications, have whatever process they want to have to screen the candidates, and give us a recommendation of five, six, seven, whatever, they want to rank them, they don't want to rank them, whatever. They give that to us, and it's important, we take it into account, and that, and then we create our list of finalists from that, maybe added to that, maybe it's only that, maybe it's a little less than that. But that's our job. That's what our job is.
Well, it's also the search firm's job.
No, see, this is where I disagree here with the scope of this, this idea that we basically hand over all discretion to the search firm. This is what I don't like. I, I understand the ideas of for information security purposes to hand over certain logistics to the search firm. But, and I understand that they might have, which I'm a little uneasy with this idea of, but they might have this, I guess there's, there's pool of applicants, of presidents in waiting, I don't know how this, you know, it kind of, whole thing kind of sounds a little sinister to me, but okay, fine. They have this whole big people of presidents in waiting that they're going to send this job to? Okay. I think that we're prestigious enough that interested people are going to know to apply for this job, and they're going to want to apply. But I don't like the idea of handing over discretion to the search firm. That's our job. I, handing over logistics, maybe they suggest to us certain rubrics they've used in the past that might be effective to us, okay. But I heard, I believe it was Trustee Petrikov, Trustee, I don't, I don't remember, Trustee Watts, I think it was Trustee Petrikov, says, we'll let the search firm, let us know what they think a good timeframe is. No!
No, no, no.
We set the timeframe, that's our.
That's not what I said.
Oh, sorry, then I, maybe I misheard you. But we should, we are the ones who exercise discretion in this process. So when we, we, it's okay for us to say, when we talk to search firms next week that fill out the RFP, hey, you know, we as a board, we've kind of decided, we would like someone in place by, you know, we would like someone to take, or at least have a contract in place by, you know, the middle of December. And so, do you think you can do that? Now, we're going to get a few of them who say we can't. Okay, see you later. If they say, yeah, sure, that's possible, then we work with them. That doesn't mean we're 100% married to that idea, but I don't want to work with anybody who says, man, I think this is going to take till July. Okay, see you later.
And that's the question I said you asked.
So, so, but we do not let them set the time. Sure, well, but we can say, hey, we'd like someone who's going to work quickly, has the resources and time to work quickly, efficiently, of course, like, we don't have to keep saying that we're going to work efficiently. Of course, we're going to work efficiently, we're smart enough to do that and to monitor that. And we know that we're going to pick the best person, we don't have to keep saying that. But we can move in a way that is expeditious and still efficient and in a, in a form of high quality. And so when we talk to search firms next week, it's going to be, hey, our feeling is that we want to have somebody, you know, by the holidays, we don't even have to give them a specific date. We just say, hey, by mid-September, we'd like to have a contract signed with, do you think you can do that? And if half of them say no, then, okay, see you later. And maybe half of them will say, I'm sorry?
You meant December, not September.
Oh, sorry, sorry, December. And mid, mid, mid-September would be great too, but mid-December's fine. And, and if some of them say, we can do that, then those are the ones we have a further conversation with. But we're not letting them set a timeframe. If there's a really good, experienced, wonderful search firm that says, listen, the only way we can do it is if you agree to, for us to take a long time and you don't have a president till June or July of next year, then we say to them, see you later. Okay, thank you, but we're not interested. That's what I'm saying. We, we need to have some sort of timeframe that we're working with. Of course, things happen. Of course, you never know what might happen. Who knows? But it's okay for us to say, look, this is our general timeframe, it's also a lot of transparency with the, I think it's good for the community to know, that, hey, we have a timeframe. Sure, things can happen, sure, but this is like what we're thinking. And we are talented enough, and we were specifically elected to do this job. I think we should take it very, very seriously and understand that the longer an interim process, or interim period exists, the less we're serving the universe, the college, that's what I.
So Trustee Zar mentioned at the end, which was going to be one of my main speaking points, is the timeline. I come from, my background is project management, delivery management, and one of the things that I struggle with when we first started this, there's no timeframe. It was, it was too open-ended. And for me, it's really, really difficult to work that way, to have an open-ended process. You know, Trustee Zar said, we are working efficiently. I don't think we're working efficiently, I don't think there's a sense of urgency to build momentum on this, because it's not a priority for us. I think we feel okay to continue the process and take as long as we want, you know, because that sense of urgency is, you know, the college will continue to run. And, and because people feel like the college will continue to run, there's no sense of urgency, so I felt that way. Also, taking a long time does not guarantee quality. There's no way, and I've done a lot of hiring in my life. And you, one of the reasons I wanted the search firm is to get the best candidate possible. You know, one of the challenges we had in HR is sometimes they don't post in the right places based on the, the type of person you're looking for. So a search firm will post in, in, in areas where educators will look at, and so on. So we want to use them, we, we'll ask them to vet things out, but I really was concerned that we didn't have a timeframe. Initially, I was thinking, okay, February would be a good timeframe, but it was too open-ended, and it can't continue that way. To me, it will drag till the summer, and then new board members will come in and will say, okay, let's wait. Then what's the point of hiring a president? So it's not stalling, but it's not a priority. There's no sense of urgency. So if we were to put a timeframe from the beginning, we would not be here. We really would not be here. So now let's put a timeframe, you know, I'm not saying December, but let's, let's put a timeframe, let's work toward that timeframe. And let's utilize the, the search firm is someone that's working for us, not someone that is working for, that we are working for them. We give them the criteria of what we're looking for, the type of candidate, and so on. They, you know, I would love for them to recommend who they think, but it's not etched in stone. You know, their recommendation is a recommendation. So if we put a timeframe, I, I think we'll be good. But open-ended, I, I would definitely be against it.
Trustee Watts.
So, number one, I take issue with the insinuation of a stalling method. Number one. It's never been the case. Number two, search firms are experts. We are not. None of us are. Search firms, this is what they do. They do higher education. And they do, they work for us. But to say that we're going to go in there and piecemeal and say, we want you to do X, Y, and Z, but we don't want your expertise, I'm hiring an expert. And I want to say, here are my goals, here are my metrics, what is the best case scenario? And if you can't deliver that in three months, you're gone. I want the expert to say like, hmm, maybe we can, but have you thought about X, Y, and Z? Now, last time we did this, we didn't have technology, like we do now. So I'm sure that the timeframe is not going to be like it was last time. And that's been noted in several board meetings. That has been on the record, that has been in the minutes, that we have said, it's probably not going to take us that long like it did last time. But I don't want to do a guarantee, say, by this time, staff, we're going to have a president. I would hope that a search firm would say, based on the technology and based on what we have learned in the last time, here are all of the systems that we have in place, here are all of the deliverables. I want to know, what are your deliverables? Show me how you have done them. So I take the sort of, we need to have it by December. Why? I still don't know, I don't hear why. If it's because of 1650, there's ways that we can go ahead and make sure that 1650, no offense, Eric, but like, there's ways that we can do that. As a board, we have to go ahead and approve the 1650 contract. So to say that we have to do this quickly because of 1650, again, why do we have to have it by December? Maybe we can do it by, I mean, who knows, maybe it'll be November, maybe it'll be January, maybe it'll be February, I don't know, I've never done this before. Neither has any of us since 2018. 18. So when we sit down with a search firm, we can say, based on your timeframe, and we have been provided timeframes of saying, like, this isn't normally what it was with the search firm, but once we get that search firm, then we can nail down the timeframe. Then you can put in the, have your influence saying like, expediency is my top priority. So give me a whole breakdown about what is the search firms in their timeframe. If somebody says 18 months, well, yeah, of course, like, that's not, I mean, whatever. If there's a search firm that's just stalling, of course, we're never going to do that. But again, what is important for all of us? Put that in the metrics. We can interview the search firms and say, these are the things we're looking for. But I want a search firm that comes in and has community input as number one. That to me is because the community input will tell us what type of president they want to see as the next president at this college. And so for me, community input is going to be number one. That is going to be my number one for this search firm.
For me, you know, I, I don't think we're that, we don't disagree, or, yeah, we don't disagree on many things. We do definitely want this process to be inclusive of the entire campus, the entire community to be involved, and to have their input on the candidates. I definitely don't want the search firm to be making the selection, rather, the committee that's going to be formed is going to be the one making the recommendations to the entire board as far as, those are the individuals that, we want the Board of Trustees, that we're going to interview, individuals will come before us. So we do have that decision in our purview, but we definitely, definitely want to take input. And we do want to, I do definitely want to take our time. All of the board members received the timeline that Trustee Watts sent of, of the search firm, when do we get it? There are dates where we can even call for a special meeting to award the search firm when we call three weeks, if, if that's, if that's where we want some urgency. And I'm glad that we're having this meeting, so we can have urgency as part of the criteria that we tell the search firm, hey, we're, we're, we want this process to be as efficient and as quickly as possible, while taking a lot of things into consideration. I know some of the speakers mentioned that we're not going to go the route of not selecting a search firm. I mean, we've been in this process for now three months, we're not going to just throw it out the window and say, we're going to take this process alone. In fact, I, I believe the search firm is very valuable for us. And I do, Trustee O'Jahmi, I am very hopeful, this is my own wish, that we would have a president by February timeline. I, I think that is more than reasonable timeline to select, to, to say, a committee is going to be selected and/or formed in, in September, and we have the entire fall to make those selections, and perhaps December, January meeting, or where we have the interviews, direct input interviews, and we bring those finalists to campus and have them also visit the campus and interview with other folks on campus. So I, I feel like that is a reasonable timeline, if, if we can see if the selection for the search firm, since the deadline is, is August 8th, is that, is that a possibility of having something by the end of August as a recommendation?
That's up to us.
For the committee? Yeah, I'm asking committee members. And Mr. Morey, since he's also.
Well, he, well, Mr. Morey will give us a thumb drive with all of the firms, and then the ad hoc committee would come together with a metric from, input from the full board as to what questions you would like us to ask the search firm for.
And can I just say something about, you know, the old caveat of, you get what you pay for? Wanting to find the search firm that says, I can deliver this in a few months. I've had worked with search firms in the past that made promises that they.
They were promising.
Yeah, were not able to deliver the best product at the end of the day. I don't want that as being my guideline, is, is the, the sum total is, how quickly can you get this done to me, for me? You know, one of the questions that was, one of our most important questions is, show me other hires that you've produced at other colleges, and how long have they been there? Because if you've got a search firm that's turning over college president after college president after college president, because they're not doing the work and we're not getting a good fit delivered, then you're, you're not helping anybody at the end of the day. So this mindset that faster is better is the same thing as you get what you pay for sometimes, and it could backfire. And I just want to be careful that we don't go down with blinders on with this one focus.
Do you have a timeframe in mind? Or you don't have one in mind?
I don't, because that's not how I operate.
Okay, so no.
I, I, I think February is probably a, a potential, February, March. We actually hired our other presidents in April. Then you had to have a contract negotiation time, which is why they didn't start until June. But. June, but that was then. Right now, I, I, I don't like those kinds of set in stone commitments.
I'm not, I'm not, again, I don't know how many times I've had to say this. I'm not suggesting that we set anything in stone.
You said you wanted to put dates out there tonight.
No, I didn't. What I said was, pretty clearly, is that I would like to pick a search firm, I would like to ask the search firm, hey, we'd like to get this done by, if we say Jan, whatever, but we say, say to them something and see what they say. Look, if there's a reputable search firm that we, that we interviewed that says, you know, may, that says, hey, sure, we think we can do this and we've done it before and they have a track record and we could do this by January 1st or mid-January, we think you could have somebody sign. That's okay, that's okay with me. I, I don't think this, I think if we have, there's a lot of murmuring in the, in the audience, sorry, people can stop murmuring in the audience. If, if there, if there is a, I think us having a vision, I mean, that's kind of our job, right? To have a vision of, look, this is kind of like when we want to get this done by. That doesn't mean that if we don't get it done by that date, we, what? We start over, we say, oh, we failed? No. But we have a goal. There's nothing wrong with that. Instead of just leaving it open, leaving it open, I think, just leaves a lot more uncertainty. And so I think it's good for the community to know that we have a goal, okay? And, and that we're striving to reach that goal. And of course, we're going to pick who we believe the best, a lot of this is timing too. The person who might be the best candidate on paper out there in the world might not, this might not be the time for them to take this job. Like, a lot of this is timing and opportunity, and so if we are, and we show the world that we're being aggressive, then we're going to get the best candidate for this period in time. And there's nothing wrong with that. But this notion of just leaving it open and say, hey, you know, it's going to take as long as it takes, and then I can see it coming. Next April or May, people are going to start announcing that they're running for election next year. You know, other candidates out there. And then there might be arguments in the community even. Hey, why are you guys picking a president when there's about to be an election in a few months? Let's wait till those people are elected. And then they're not sworn in until January 1st, 2027, and now we think our hands are tied that we shouldn't start the process till January 1st, 2027, because that's when the new board is coming in, and then it takes another four months, four or five months. I mean, there's nothing wrong with having, I think it serves everyone that we have this process done before the election season starts next year to say, look, we did it, we did our job, we did what we're elected to do, and we're not getting involved in any of the politics.
So this is all about your concern of the next program for our election?
No, I'm saying that's enough, that's yet, that's yet another factor. If I, if I, if I'm speaking correctly, the, the, just though I'm not wrong, the current CBA ends like August 2026 or something like that, is that correct?
The 1650 contract.
Sorry, 16, sorry, 1650 contract ends August 2026. So I, I don't assume that they want to finalize it in July of 2026. I'm assuming they want to do it before that. And I'm assuming that they want to, you know, have some time to talk about that. And I think, I believe it serves everyone if that's done under a permanent president. And so that's going to need, it's going to take a few months of negotiation for that process, which should, I think should be done under a new president. So I mean, there's a lot of what I think are pretty valid reasons for us to say, look, we have a, we have a vision that we want to do this quickly and we think we can get it done by December. If somebody says, hey, December, okay, I'm, I don't think December, let's do January, okay, fine. But let's at least have like a goal, a vision. That's our job. It's not our job to say, just leave it open and hey, whatever happens, happens. I don't think that's our job at all. I think that we have to have a vision. And right now, we don't.
Trustee Watts?
So number one, we have a vision, we're going to elect a, appoint a new president. Number two, the election cycle has nothing, if, if people are worried about the election cycle, this is the last, you should not be in this room. Okay? Let's be honest. Right now, our job is to focus on the search firm and give them our criteria of what we want to see. If you want to see a search firm that says, I can deliver December 15th, you can then mark their metric accordingly. Politics does not belong in this whole process. And I am definitely completely uneasy about having people in the community have to come in front of the board and we have to vote on that person. I know many people who'd love to be on this committee, but the idea of them as introverts, perhaps being in front of everybody to say, hey, I want to be on this board and I want everybody to judge me and to vote on me? That is not to me, that is the opposite of inclusion.
I didn't say.
That is exclusion. So, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought, okay, hold, so correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding was, is that if we want individuals outside of AFT, and there are seven members, to serve on this presidential search committee that we want them to be on there, that they have to come before the board to be voted on?
That's not what I said.
Okay, so then.
I said that they should express an interest.
Yes.
Through some sort of process, email, sorry, they should express interest through an email address or intake, and that they should get on by approval of us. That doesn't mean they have to come here and make a president, they don't even have to be, I didn't say they have to be.
No, but they have to be, it has to be a public vote.
Sure. I don't know, first of all, the search committee is not going to be a private matter in any case. I don't know how else, in a transparent and democratic way, someone would get on the search committee. Should they simply get on the search committee because you think they should be on it or because I think they should be on it? That doesn't make sense to me at all.
Well, let me just clarify. In the past, where each trustee would recommend, now, I'm hearing from Dr. Ganko, last time it was three individuals? Was it two individuals, three?
How many did we each?
In 2013, it was one.
One.
In 2018, it was two.
Two. Two individuals. And those individuals, I don't recall, I was pretty involved in following meetings, I don't recall those were people that we voted on. But that is a suggestion, is that your suggestion is that those two people would be recommended by each one of us and then we vote on them?
No. My, my suggestion would be, first of all, I don't, I, I don't like the idea of seven times two, 14 people making it on, on the search committee, and each of them could have the approval or whatever of only one of us.
Okay.
That doesn't make much sense to me. What makes more sense to me is that if we figure out what the profiles of these people should be, so let's say, I'm not, so, two people, two students, three, whatever, and then we let the world know, hey, this is what we're looking for, so if you fit one of these things and you're interested in being on the search committee, please go to this website, or please send an email to this email address that says you'd like to be on it. And then we get those names and we can look at them, and then I can say in a meeting, hey, I've looked at the names, I'd like to make a motion that, you know, this person or this group of people be on the search committee. And they get, that way you're guaranteeing everyone agrees that this is a vital, important process, right? Okay, so then that way you're agreeing, excuse me, that everyone who got on the search committee, got on the search committee through a democratic, transparent process and were met with the approval, the, the affirmation, like, that's what we do, right, of a majority of us. Otherwise, they're getting on the search committee because I wanted them on the search committee? I don't think that makes, that, to me, that could, that could lead to like favoritism, it could lead to me having like, I don't know, a mole or somebody who's like my secret spokesperson on the search. I don't think that's effective at all. I think that somebody should be on the search committee because they showed interest and we approved them. Hey, it's very possible that we say we want, I don't know, two of X kind of person on the search committee and only two people submit stuff. And so they're the two people that are going to, I don't know. But at the end of the day, it doesn't seem to make, especially by the way, if we're going to have a search committee that is made up of people of certain roles, right? So two of this, three of that, whatever we do, then what? Are we going to assign, Trustee Watts, hey, you pick the two students. Trustee Pelichkov, you pick the two administrators. It doesn't work. So there needs to be a, we understand what the roles and profiles of these people are going to be, unless I'm supposed to bring forward 14 people, one for every one of these things, and then you guys, there has to be some sort of process in which these people get on, other than they're simply on it because I want them to be on it. That doesn't seem to make much sense to me at all.
I, I will say that the last search, it was too large. There, there were too many people, and that was because we didn't know how to whittle it down successfully. So there hasn't been a process that fits everybody's needs of how you determine. I will say that when we did do it each time, you did have an application process where somebody submitted the reason why they were interested. You also had, they had to sign agreements for non-disclosures. They also had to be at every meeting. You weren't going to get to recommend and vote and rank anybody if you only went to one meeting and just had your name on the, on the roster, so to speak. So we, we, we had some parameters, but it's always, so I think the first thing we would need to do is agree to how many people is effective. Now, I will tell you that a search firm is pretty good at helping guide that kind of process as well. I'm not sure, because you seem to be, and I'm sorry, I'm pointing at you, Trustee Zabir, but you're the one who has spoken about how you want the search firm to be engaged with. And I worry that, yes, you, you want to, want to buffet and you want to say, I want you to do A, B, and C and forget the rest. A, they're going to be committing to a price point that has nothing to do with a, a selection of, of just a, a marginalized role. They're, they're going to be bidding with the understanding, they're going to be the search firm and this is what they, they provide. So I, I'm, you have some ideas about what you would like to see them provide. I say, as Trustee Watts said, is, this is their expertise, this is what they do, this is what we're hiring them for, this is what they're, we're paying them for. We can ask the questions about, because I've done it in the past, about how, what is, what is your, you know, timeline and, and what is your, what are your results kind of thing, and that becomes important. But you can't, I think you're putting in too many restrictions about what their role is going to be, in which case you might not get the best search firm to begin with.
Well, you know, like one of my.
Because you want them to fit a certain.
Sure. Sorry, Trustee Eljamie.
Picture.
What, just one little comment. One of my worries of this again is that it draws out, for instance, if we say to the search firm, hey, we'd like you to tell us or suggest to us what you think this expanded search committee, aside from the seven that we're contractually obligated to do, what that should look like and how that should all work. Again, we could do that amongst ourselves and decide that at the August 25th meeting and pass a motion for it. Or we could hire a search firm in September and then wait for them for another month to tell us what the rest of that search committee should look like, and then we don't do that until October or November, and then, and then, and then. That's what I'm worried about.
But.
That's what I'm worried about.
But you can, you can ask those questions when we interview the search firm.
Sure, but we don't have to tell them, listen.
I don't, just point of order. The search firm will be getting a list of the individuals that we're going to select to be on that committee. I don't think that is their job to select.
No, oh, no, no, no.
The individuals who will serve on the committee. They will work with whomever.
Right.
The board selects.
Right.
Well, that, but that's what we're, that's what, no, I think that's what we're disagreeing about.
No, 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 no.
I don't think that is.
No.
Well, then, well, then, why, what role is the cert, okay, what role do you imagine that the search firm would have in determining what the search committee looks like?
I will tell you this, search firms will give you suggestions and guidance. They're not going to tell us to do anything.
Okay, that's fine, but that's not what I asked you.
Okay.
What, what role do you think that we have to look to the search firm to, as to how the search committee might look like?
What normally happens is you, we as a board can say, are there any suggestions of what you have found have been successful in order to put together a committee? And they might give us suggestions that we totally disregard, or they might give us some good ideas. Or we don't have to ask that question at all and we can move forward and we could, we decide how we want to do it if we don't think we're having an issue doing it.
Okay.
And then we just hand the names over and then they handle the logistics. And that is their, their biggest part of their job is handling the logistics of getting that.
That's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting the last thing you said.
Well, no, no, and, and that's, I'm just saying, don't put so many restrictions out there where you, you, you are telling, telling these search firms, we only want you to do A and B, and, and we're done with you for everything else.
No, I, I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm suggesting that we take charge of the things that we can.
The search firm will insist we do.
So, well, okay, so what I'm saying is, the composition of the search committee, above and beyond the seven members that we're contractually obligated to do, is something that we can totally figure out on our own.
We can.
And we could do that before we even hire a search firm.
We can.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. And then they, of course, they deal with the logistics of it, that's, to me, that's 90% of their job.
Yes.
Is the logistics, the intake, the protection of information, like, that's, to me, I don't even think it's their job to recommend candidates to us. That's the search committee's job.
We, we decide.
Sure.
And they do the ranking that falls within what we've decided.
Who's they? You mean the search committee?
The search, the search firm will have a list of what the search committee
Yeah.
has decided that, how they want to rank.
Sure, but the search firm is, are you suggesting?
They just do a vetting of the candidates.
Okay, but are you not suggesting, are you suggesting that the search firm exercised their discretion in who they think are good candidates?
They will give, they will have like Team A and Team B, you know, these ones.
But based on what the search committee tells them.
Based upon what they're told, they, that they, these people fit into those parameters.
By the search committee?
By the search committee, yes.
Right.
And the board, the full board, they, they, you know.
Sure, of course. Right, so that's what I'm saying. It's not, it's not, they're not exercising much discretion.
No, they're not, they're not telling us who we, who we should even cut down to, that will be the committee.
Right. So we can decide what we want the committee to look, I think we can do that before we hire a search firm. We could do that, we could brainstorm about it over the next two weeks and decide and pass a, a motion for what it's going to look like on August 25th and have a intake, we can direct the, you know, the college to prepare some sort of intake process now and then open it up to the world on August 26th and have that open for a couple of weeks. I mean, like, we could do that.
Yeah, they may still even have the, the process that was used the last time.
Okay, but, but I, but back to, back to this, I don't, I'm really, I don't think it's democratic or transparent or apolitical to simply have people on this search committee because.
They know somebody.
Yeah, two people that I, I think would be, they're going to be, why would the public not believe that they're my, people on the inside? That they're, they're, they're making my arguments on the search committee? Like, that's not a, I don't think that's an effective way to put people on a search committee. Why don't we do it the same way the faculty senate is going to do it? Which the faculty senate, from what I understand, is going to get together and have a, a people show interest and then an election, right? Okay, so they're going to have people show interest and then they're going to have an election. That's what I'm advocating for. I'm advocating for people to show interest and then we have, we approve them. That's exactly the same thing that the faculty senate is doing.
Trustee Eljamie?
So I, I think there's some confusion because we're, we're connecting the search committee with the search firm. Yeah. And I, I, it's really important we separate the two. So how we, how we select the search committee, the, the committee, is our responsibility. So now let's, let's focus on hiring the, the search firm. Any company that you hire, whether it's to build something for you or to do anything for you, is you put a criteria of what you want them to do and you put a timeline of when you want them to be done. So for me, and I go back to a timeline, we, we resist a timeline because we think, you know, it's just, let's go through the process. So when you hire somebody, a vendor, you tell them the criteria. You're not going to sacrifice the quality of the vendor. The vendor will come back to you and say, I can't do this, you know, and, and it doesn't mean you're going to take the, the worst vendor possible. You're putting a timeline to things that you need them to get things done for you, which is like any bid process. I've been through a lot of bid processes and you give the criteria and somebody could meet or somebody doesn't. And so we're not going to sacrifice quality. And I, I think we got to stop bringing that up, that if we make the process more efficient or a little faster, it's going to sacrifice the, you know, again, the right firm. Because most firms that bid for, they've been in the industry for a while and so on. So the committee, let's leave it aside, and this is something that needs to be decided. Let's separate the two. The firm, we do need the firm. We need them to recommend, to vet out the resumes, to vet out the resumes, and then make recommendation. Now, their recommendation, as I said before, it's not something that we have to go by, but it will help our job be easier. And for the public, it also will show some transparency that some of these people were recommended based on the vetting process. It just... It helps show, you know, that we're doing it the right way. But I've not seen any major disagreement. I think we're going back and forth. We could select a committee, you know, based on... I think eventually, based on the way I'm hearing, if you've got seven plus seven, that's 14, and if you've got another 14, if we do two, you know, that's 28. If you do seven, that's 21. It's still a large number, but if it's something that we need to do... Also, we need to use lessons learned from the past and make it work. But we cannot be worried about not having the right vendor or search firm because we put the criteria too stringent. We're not trying to get somebody from down the street to kind of find somebody first. We're going through a bidding process. And all these companies are used to having timelines. It's not something new for them. It's not something that will scare them. It's just a normal process to when you bid and, you know, our procurement department will tell you, it's normal process to put a timeline to when you want things back or selected.
Trustee Watts?
So we're not buying furniture. So I think let's... We're talking about humans here, talking about people with paychecks, with families. And so when we're starting to say, "We want a president," now, again, I am not for any specific date. I'm hearing mid-December, I'm hearing January, I'm hearing maybe April. Again, I have no idea. The search firm will say, "This is what we've learned. This is our average. We've done five months." I don't know. So I don't know. So say, like, we need to have a timeframe. I am not the expert. I have not heard from a search firm. They will tell me, and after speaking or having 28 of them, I'm sure we'll get a sense of, "Okay, this is probably around the average, five months, six months, seven months. Don't know." However, when we're talking about procurement, this is a president of an institution of hired with students. We're not talking about desks. We're not talking about chairs. We're not talking about vendors of objects that are 3D. We're talking about person with feelings, with families, with teachers, with professors. So the communication of, "We have to hurry up the urgency. We have to get this urgently done. We have to do it quickly. We have to do it rapidly. We have to do it correctly." And again, I lean on the search firms to say, "Hey, Irene, this is my expert opinion, X amount of months. This is my expert opinion, X amount of months. I want the data to determine what is that timeframe." So until I've heard from those search firms, I am not putting down a timeframe. They may say, "Hey, we're using AI, we're using all..." I mean, I don't know what the tech is that they're using. So I am not going to come up here and say, "I know what the timeframe is." I'm not an expert. I am open to saying, "What is your timeframe for what you believe would be an efficient..." I'm using that word. "Full, comprehensive search for a president with community input, and give me the realistic date." Because if we don't... Because the other thing I don't want to hear about a date is that we put a date, and if we go beyond that date, we're stalling. Why haven't you guys found one yet? Again, let us get that search firm, and then let's come up with that timeframe and say, "Okay, we feel really confident with the search firm. We all feel really great that they're going to do a diligent job. And publicly, here is our timeframe." And then, with the search firm, they can then say, "Here's the timeframe that we recommend, that we have proven, that we have metrics, the data, and that's when we then put that publicly out there." That is where my comfort level is.
Do you think that... Oh, sorry. Do you think that the timeframe that they... That the search firms who apply for this, that they provide to us, then are not a sort of metric we should judge them by?
Oh, no, I'm absolutely going to judge them on that, absolutely. I don't want... I just don't want a search firm to tell me something because they think that they can't deliver. I guess that... I want them to be authentic to say, "Okay, here's what I think the timeframe should..." This is where I think we can accomplish everything that you're asking us to do. Here's the timeframe, and here it is. Like, give me a project timeline. Give me week three, week six. I want extremely detailed so that also I know, "Okay, it's week three. Why aren't you guys doing this? It's week six. Why aren't you doing this?"
And they do provide that.
And that's what I'm saying. I want completely transparent. So absolutely, but I don't want them to say, "Oh, I have to hurry up and say three months because or else I don't get this contract." Then don't. Then don't. Don't apply.
To me, if I were a search firm, I obviously, and I was able to sort of propose a timeframe, whatever timeframe... I would propose a longer timeframe. I mean, you know, it gives me more time to do... You know, obviously, they would want a longer timeframe, and maybe they feel that they could charge more money for a longer timeframe, too.
But they don't get charged. It'd be a lump sum.
I know, but when they make their proposal with a certain timeframe, with a certain amount of money. But what I'm saying is, like, I think it's important... Well, I guess what I'm asking you is, all things being equal, would you... Are you... Is expediency important to you, all other things being equal?
I don't want...
I know, that's not what I meant.
Well, hold on, you're asking me a question. Let me finish. You're asking me, is expediency... If I say, "I want this to be expedient," number one, everyone's going to be like, "Why is the house on fire?"
That's not what I asked.
But this is one, the communication portion. I don't want a search firm then saying urgency, expediency, because they're going to use that language and say, "Okay, hold on. What's going on at HFC? Do I want this candidate to come?" Like, again, they may have internal candidates. I don't know how these firms work. I don't want them to then hear these catchphrases or these words, these triggers, and say, "Okay, we have to hurry up and get this done." I want them to be completely honest and say, "We're going to give you the best quality of work. We're going to give you our best. We're not going to charge you more because we want X amount." Like, if a firm says, "Okay, well, we'll give you 1,200 hours, but above that, we're going to charge you." No, because then I think that they're going to purposely stall because they want to get paid more. I want them to give me a proposal to say, "Here's everything that we've heard from you. Here's our timeline, and we believe that we can go ahead and give you our best work so that you can go ahead and select the best candidate possible." And I don't... And now, again, if they're saying that they're going to charge over or overtime or whatever that is, like, that's a nonstarter for me.
What timeframe do you think is too long?
I don't... That's what I'm saying. I don't know what these search firms are saying. If they say five months...
But do you have any, like, in your... Just generally, I mean, like, what timeframe do you think is too long?
I mean, again, I don't know. Give me the search firms. The search firms are the experts. All I can say...
Yeah, I know, but you must have an... I have an idea.
I have no idea. This is what it is. I have no idea because I have never sat on a board that has had to do a search for a president. The only reference that I have are what the previous trustees on this board have told me. And I view that as, okay, given the time that has passed, it shouldn't take that long. All right, so if you're... What was the last search? How long... How many months was that or the timeframe?
That went from almost a year, 2017 to 2018. We started it in July, I think the... We start... We put the RFP out then for a search firm.
Not in January, was it? Dr. Jensen?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm talking about Russ. He was hired after Stan Jensen. So, and that was in 2017. It started in 2017, and he was hired in April of 2018. And there was a... It was pretty close to when we started, July, when we started the RFP process for the search firm and then moved into the next phases. The reason it took probably longer than normal... Here's a couple of things you got to keep in mind when you are searching for a college president. And it does talk about timing, is what's the climate out there nationally? Are there a lot of colleges searching for college presidents at the same time? And there's a lot of competition for bodies out there. So you're going to have less... I've been on this board where if you've got 15 candidates, decent candidates, you were lucky, and half of them drop out at the end of the day. We had several drop out during... When Dr. Jensen was hired at the nth hour. So there's a lot of things that complicate a search. It's not all cut and dry, and it can impact that timeline that you want to maintain. When you hire a search firm, they should have a track record that can be verifiable about what their results have been in the past. And it's very important to pay attention to their track record, to see whether they've had good results in the past. I don't know of a search firm that we interviewed that wasn't able to produce that kind of data.
Yeah, but the first term...
Okay, so to say that I don't know about the timeframe, I only hear about what trustee Barry has said, trustee Pechikov back in 2017, not eight years later, it has... There's no way it would take that long.
But that was a fundamentally different process. So for instance, in 2017, President Jensen said, announced a retirement in the middle of 2017, said that he's going to stay until June of 2018. So there was no interim gap contemplated. And President Cavalluna was announced in April of 2018 as they picked him. So it's a fundamentally different process, right? You didn't have a process where there was sort of... In this case, we had... It sort of all happened pretty quickly. He announced he's leaving, then he left a couple months later, and then now we're in the process we are now. So, and we're in an interim state. That didn't exist back then. So...
Isn't it sort of the...
I was going to say, yeah, Vice President Salkowski was in there.
John Salkowski was the interim.
It ended up happening for other reasons, but I'm saying it wasn't contemplated from the beginning. From the beginning, that was not the way that it was... It ended up, for reasons out of everyone's control, that ended up happening. But that's not the way it was contemplated from the beginning. In the beginning, President Jensen said, "Hey, I'm leaving. I'll be around for another year."
But he did.
I understand.
I raised my hand exactly 22 minutes ago. Please, please, please.
Just to say, my timeframe would be obviously shorter than whatever we've done.
I do not interrupt anybody. I raised my hand about 25 minutes ago, the chair nodded his head. I think he lost the fact I wanted to say something. Let's not do that. Yes, we didn't start off 2018 with the plan of hiring an interim. Dr. Stanley Jensen had to leave. We were negotiating with Russ Cavalluna, and there was like a period that we brought in John Salkowski. Correct. Trustee Pechikov, I agree with you that the committee was too large last time, and that's possibly why it led us to take so long to make that decision. Okay? Yes, trustee Pechikov, myself, there's other people in this room that can offer advice on how we did it, but at the end of the day, it's going to be the seven of us that decide which direction we're going. And Chair Mosiv, it's probably a good idea you did not call on me right away when I raised my hand. I visited my very, very old father earlier, and he tried to quote somebody. That person was like, "I wish I was a giraffe or maybe a camel." So when I about to say something, what time it goes, comes out of my mouth, I thought it through before I let it out. Because there was a comment made earlier by two of our colleagues that I wanted to address where originally started. Somebody was getting blamed for that. So I'll leave that alone till a later time. Hopefully, that comments, those comments don't come up again in our discussion. So just to keep the temperature down moving forward, I'm going to leave that alone.
Thank you. Just so... Sorry, just so we're clear on the last timeline. In the middle of 2017, President Jensen said he would leave. He said, "I'll hang around for a year." And then things happened. He got another job, if I remember correctly, and he ended up leaving earlier than... But he left... He ended up physically leaving the college on December 25. And President Cavalluna was announced, I just looked it up, on March 28. So that's like three and a half months from the time that president left till the time the next one was put in. And I'm sure the process started before December 15.
Right, in July of 2017.
But again, there was... My point is, when that process started, there was no idea... There was the idea that President Jensen was going to hang around till June 2018. And there wouldn't... There wasn't a sense of... And yes, I have no problem with saying, a sense of, like, urgency, like, hey, we're sort of in a limbo state right now. Let's get a permanent president. That wasn't the case back then. We're in a fundamentally different position here. And hopefully, we have different... So it should render us to have different sort of priorities in this situation. Back then, I don't think we can compare anything about that situation with this situation. When that process started, the idea was that the permanent president was going to hang around and even transition with the new president maybe for a few months. That's not the case here. So we're in a completely different situation. I don't think there's any analogies to that situation at all. I'd like to at least make one motion, which I, hopefully, we can all agree on, which is the motion to suggest... Or the motion to... About the faculty senate picking their seven people. So I'd like... Is it proper to make a motion at this time, Chair?
We can make a motion at any time, but I would be comfortable asking the AFT president if that's a possibility, if they can have those individuals. We don't... We don't really need a motion, so I'd like them to address that. So President Rader, if you can let us know? Yeah, yeah, please.
The... It's not... The union actually does not pick the seven... First of all, it's actually five full-time faculty and then two adjunct faculty is called for in the Constitution. It's the faculty senate. Senate Chair Michael Hill's here. It would be the faculty senate that would run the election. The union does not run that election, and we don't make that selection. It's the colleagues on the faculty senate who would do that.
So Dr. Hill, is that a possibility?
The difficulty is, we come back on the 19th of August. We have to solicit volunteers to run for that committee. Then we have to run an election. Getting all that done by September 10 might be a little bit difficult because we need a little bit of time. I mean, we work with the process the same way the board does. So being able to push through things like that takes a little bit of time. We can try, and I can try my best. I'll introduce this in our faculty org meeting on the 17th, and we'll talk at that point, as a faculty body, about the process for getting members of the search committee.
I have to ask, is it even... Can we even make a motion to order the senate faculty to do something on our... Well, I don't know what your motion would be.
My motion would be to direct the president to order a sheet camera.
Oh. Man, I think that she could order, but I'm not sure how effectively that works. So I would say, if the Board of Trustees asks the senate to try to come up with our members of the search committee by September 10, we will make every effort we can to do so.
When's your next meeting after September 10?
It would be the second, the second Wednesday of every month.
So October. So I'm not comfortable with... I'm personally not comfortable with that. I would like us to, again, have something where we have a clear expectation. I'm not... I take everything that Dr. Hill says as, like, said in... I mean, he was very transparent, said in good faith. We'll do our best, and I get it. But I would like us to have, you know, some sort of direction for them so that it's not... It's not... It's something that they have to put on their agenda that day and that they prepare their members. And I think five weeks... And, and that they prepare their members, and I think five weeks, I get it that they come back, but there's ways to communicate with the members before then. I get they come back on August 19th, you said? I get they come back on August 19th, but there's ways to communicate with everybody before then, to say, hey, this is coming down the pipe. And, and you're, they're still gonna be here for 19th to the 10th, more than three weeks, twenty, sorry, about three weeks before that meeting. So I, seems doable to me. But I'd like, I, I would feel better if we like said that that's what we expect from them in an official capacity, so that it becomes a concrete goal for them on that day.
I, I'm not comfortable doing that at this time. However, Doctor Hill said they will make every effort. We also need to make our effort right now to, to say what that magic number of the committee members would be, knowing that seven members will be from the Faculty Senate. So I'd like to know what everybody's magic number is, if you have one. I know forty, last time, the number was forty, forty members. That, that is a lot, so.
They did not participate at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, but still a, a large number for such a committee, so.
We would have three board members?
Three board members, that, that is ten already members.
Right.
I'd like it to be under thirty, but that's my, my.
My.
How many did we have last time?
Forty.
Forty originally.
And I think, okay, Trustee Barry, you were on the last one, correct?
Yes.
And do you agree that there was too many?
Yes, I said that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that was on the committee last time? Trustee Mosiv, were you there?
No, I was.
All right, Trustee Petchakov, you believed it was too many as well.
It was too many. I sat, I was not, I was on the search firm committee. I sat in on all the search committee meetings. So I was a witness to what was going on, but I was not one of the board members. I just was an observer, so, yes, it was too many.
I defer to Trustee Barry and Petchakov that forty was too many. Trustee Barry, what would be your recommendation?
I'm doing some additions here, and somebody, let me know who else we should add. So there will be a subcommittee of the board, three, three people. The seven full-time faculty with addition to adjunct, five plus two. One student, seven community members, that totals eighteen. Do we need anybody else on that committee?
Can I suggest, I'm sorry, can I suggest more students? Only because if we have one student, and if that student is unable to attend, just to have an alternate.
He said seven.
No.
She's correct, yeah, we've had two students before and only one show up, so, okay, I'm okay with that.
I think that we should not look at it as terms of raw numbers, but instead look at it like, what are the, what are the profiles of these people? So in other words, I think we should first start with, okay, there's gonna be seven faculty members that we know that's gonna be. Then we should say, okay, so we want two students, X community members, X administrat, whatever, whatever it is. We figure that out first, instead of saying there's some magic number we're playing with. You know what I mean? And then, and, and that will lead us to whatever number we have. But that, if, if we're interested in this committee being a cross-section of the community, cross-section of stakeholders, then let's first decide who those stakeholders are and how much we want of each, and, and then we'll have a number. Instead of just saying right now, the number should be twenty-five, that doesn't make much sense to me. Then who are those eighteen other people gonna be? That's what I'm saying.
You could work it either way. I'm just saying, just for the sake of organizing a committee and working with a committee, a committee that is large, it's very difficult. It drags out. When you have a smaller number, you, you pretty much are efficient. So, but we can definitely look at profiles of Trustee Barry and then Trustee Watts.
Yes, I mean, the three board members are given, trustees are seven full-time and plus the two, I mean, five plus two. That's, there's a process for that. Two students. I think we can later on, if we say seven community members, we can define what we're looking for there at a later point. I'm just trying to answer Chair Mosiv's number. Now we're up to nineteen. I guess my question was, is there anybody here that's not represented that we want on this committee?
Oh, okay, so you're saying, okay, so I didn't understand. So you're saying those seven community members.
I think you're concentrating on the seven community members. We'll define what we need later and approve, but at this point, we're at nineteen.
I would say definitely we need people from administration to be on that committee.
So you wanna add two more?
Okay, two administrators. Do we want anybody from the public schools?
I would say one from the school district.
Do we wanna say a position or just one from the school district? We'll define that later. I'm just putting it out there, because we're up to twenty-one.
Somebody who works closely with the college, probably somebody in the early college program administrator.
Somebody that's associated with, so that's okay, that's, that's one more, so up to twenty-two.
So the other thing is, two, two points. Number one, I think we have to go, and Henry Ford College serves other communities outside of Dearborn. I think that we need to be mindful of what those individuals, who are those individuals that we wanna serve on this committee?
Yeah, so the community member I brought to the table last time was somebody from the Detroit area.
And the second thing is, I would say, whatever this draft is, I would want to present this to the search firms when we're interviewing them, to get their approach or their feedback, to say, here's what I would say. Yes, here are some of the ones that have, other institutions have done. You may want to, you know, get, again, if we're interviewing them, let's find out what their feedback is. So I would say, this is a draft.
We can change it later, yeah.
That we would be able to have as a working document, add that to their interview questions. I definitely do not like the idea of forty. It sounds like forty was way too many. I, I, again, I don't have a set number, but I think having those individuals that represent all of our stakeholders, both in Dearborn and outside of Dearborn, and even perhaps at the state level, I think would be a good idea.
So just to make Patty's job easier, go ahead.
Trustee Dan Versi?
I think we should add somebody from our foundation also.
Trustee Zad?
Nope.
I have, and I know this is the way it was done in the past. I have a question, I don't wanna call it a concern, but, um, I'm, I'm a little, so obviously, our, our role, we all agree that our role as trustees is kind of outsized in all of this. I mean, at the end of the day, we, we make this decision. I, I don't know what role, other than maybe being like too big of a figure in the room, that we would serve on this search committee. Like, I think it might, we might all be better served if we didn't serve on the search committee. Especially, first of all, that could give like three, you can't, once you pick those three, you can't be rotating them, right? Because then that would be violate the Open Meetings Act, so it has to be those three, or less than those three the whole time. And I don't want us to end up in a situation where we're competing for those three spots. I don't think that's a good look. And we're obviously gonna have sort of an outsized voice on that committee. So to me, I, I don't think we need to be on that committee. We can always see the list of applicants whenever we want. And ultimately, we're gonna get the committees, we're gonna see the committees' recommendations, and then we're gonna make an determination of who the finalists are. But I just feel like if we were in a room full of, um, committee members who are not elected officials like us who need to make the decision, that it would be kind of like, I don't know, it just seems a little outsized presence for us in that committee.
I can, I can tell you from experience, that's not the case.
My worry, my worry is that, my worry is that there could be, you know, you could really direct the agenda in a, in a certain way, and it might, or people might feel like you're doing that, I don't know.
No, that was never the case, I can tell you.
And then what if like four of us wanna be on it, you know?
You can't, because you can't have a core.
Why not?
First of all, I disagree with you on that, okay? Because I think it's important for whoever our president chooses to be on that committee, that we sit in and find out, you know, what is going on firsthand. I don't like secondhand information, so I would never agree to doing that.
Are these search committee meetings, or they?
They're public meetings.
They're public meetings, right? Okay, so they're public meetings, eh?
I think it, I think, I don't think we're gonna have an argument there. There was three, three board members that were, you know, chosen by our chair, two serve on our F B.
I've, I'm trying to include everyone in this process.
Yeah.
So the people who will serve on this committee probably haven't served, for example, on the search firm committee.
Exactly, that's, that's.
So we're gonna be rotating around this process, and.
Unless they don't wanna participate, you know? Just for the record, I wanna go on the record saying I wanna serve on the committee, and if possible, I'd like to chair that committee, so, just for the record. So we're up to twenty-three, just so you know.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's what happened last time. That's, yeah, that's including the foundation board member, up to twenty-three. Patty, were you following, or are you gonna repeat it? You're the best, thank you very much. So, yeah, we're up to twenty-three.
I, I know we have civic organizations, but we have too many of them.
I was gonna say, this is how, how.
This is what happens, then we're gonna end up with fifty board members. Civic organizations, I heard earlier that this can't be just community members from Dearborn. I completely agree about that, but that could be part of the seven community members.
Seven community members.
Yeah.
May I offer, in all of the employee groups that you've mentioned, just consideration that the support staff have not yet been mentioned. They've been the only omission so far.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can have one.
Support staff?
One, one SSA member, yeah.
Well, what about two? Well, I, we have seven faculty.
See, and this is how it gets to be four.
No, I know, but one, okay.
Keep the committee as small as possible.
It's fine.
Let's stop at twenty-four for now.
I'm on the record for two.
Trustee Al Japni?
Are we gonna have anybody from HR?
I don't know, but the two administrators might be from HR, I don't know.
One of them could be from HR, yeah.
I think it would be good to be able to.
To have somebody from.
Give us guidance, impartial guidance, if anything outside the, the selection.
Okay.
Now, what we've done before, and correct me, Trustee Petchakov, we had, we worked with the college president to have somebody like a liaison between the committee and the board.
We did, but I don't know that, that necessarily.
So you don't think that served us well? I'm okay with either way.
If, if that's okay with everyone, the chair of that committee will be kind of.
Okay, all right, so twenty-four, we can always talk about changing it, but let's stop right there for now.
Twenty-four is a great number.
Yeah.
Trustee, you got?
So now that we've talked about that, let's decide on the mechanism for people to get on this committee. I still believe that the mechanism should be, um, you show interest in some way, and we publish what the roles are that we're trying to fill, but you show interest in some way, and then we, everyone gets on because a majority of them are, I just don't see any other way that people get on.
Most of those trustees are defined, okay? So the foundation, we'll leave it up to the board, the foundation board to pick whoever, whether you wanna send. Support staff, same thing, you know, the, the only thing that I keep, you know, visiting when I'm listening to talk is the community members. We need to define that.
Well, I, I still think that even if, and it might just be a formality, that, you know, the foundation sends us, obviously, we tell them we want one, we've told the world we want one member from the, I'm just, sorry, I'm not picking on the foundation, I'm just using them as an example. We're, we're, we said, well, one, one member from the foundation. They send us somebody.
Yes.
Again, there has to be some sort of mechanism that they get on. So even if it's a formality, we should, in a meeting, say, you know, uh, flan, I don't know how to say it in English, this person. Person X wants to be, was suggested by the foundation to be on the board to fill the foundation spot. Let's have unanimous consent to include them, unanimous, like, there just should be some.
Like, fine, fine approval to.
Yeah, like, how else do you get on it?
After we define everybody, we can bring it all as one motion.
Yes.
And if there's no projections.
Right, how else do you get on this commit, that's what I mean. If you just, if we, if we ask the foundation to provide somebody, then what, they just show up to a meeting? And then they're, they're, they're on it? To me, that's not an effective, that's, that's not us having any sort of accountability for this committee, which of, of course, eventually, we hold the accountability for what the committee does, how it acts.
You're just reminding me why we had a liaison, somebody that actually does the communication between everybody.
We can, we can probably have somebody from, um, that's already from our staff, because that's what it was last time, who, who would do the communication part of it.
Trustee Watts?
So last time, we, forty was too many, the process, right? The process was that they were interested, they went online, they filled out the form, correct?
Yes. There, there was, yeah, I actually still have it.
So people had to fill out the form?
They had.
But they were recommended by board members.
From the, they, they, if they were recommended by, you directed them to the site. They had to fill out the form of why they were interested, who they were.
Yeah, we brought the names forward.
Right.
Yeah, somebody couldn't do it.
But I'm saying, did we then, as a board, make a motion and approve them?
We did not.
Did we have, okay, was it an issue?
It was not an issue.
Okay, so then I don't think it's an issue.
But what hap, okay, so for instance, so it won't be an issue with, let's say, the one member from the foundation, because I assume they're not gonna send us three people.
We're gonna concentrate on the seven community members.
Right, or the students. What, if you're saying, I said, you said two students, what, what, right, two students?
It's usually the student council president and the designated from their board.
Okay, but what if, what, okay, but what if, what if a, someone who's not on the student council would like to serve, serve on this committee? I'm just saying, why don't we have a process that is open to everybody? And in, in the sense of the students and the, and everything that's wide open like that? Like, I'm looking at the student one. If we're saying we want two students, and we tell the world, hey, we're looking for two students to serve on the search committee, then I assume any student here would be eligible to serve on the search committee, not whoever the student council picks necessarily. And we tell them, go to this website, fill out this form, tell us why you wanna be on it. We look at it, and we, I mean, I just don't see the problem with this.
First off.
And it's us taking like some accountability for it.
If you start this, and we don't have a good handle about what commitment these people are gonna be making, they're not gonna wanna sign up for anything if they find out, you know, we don't have, we are saying, you're gonna, you're gonna attend this many meetings for this length of time. So I don't wanna put the cart before the horse here and, and be out there soliciting for volunteers who don't know what they're committing to, and.
Well, that, that would be in whatever posting we make, right?
But we haven't even, yeah, had that conversation yet.
Usually, the student council president's involved, they're on campus, they know a lot about the campus, I mean, they're, they're there. They have, they can make the time commitment. That's why we go that way.
So then why are we saying students? Why don't we just say the student council president or whoever they?
We can, I mean, we can.
I mean, I don't, to me, that's not, I don't like that, but whatever. I'm just saying, if we're just saying two students, it should be open to any stu, I just, it doesn't seem to me that we would tell a stu, you know, we've had a lot of students come up and speak here at meetings who've been extremely impressive and extremely involved, and they might not be on the student council.
Do they have the time commitment, that's.
Maybe they do.
Yeah.
And if they do, I, I just don't see how, you know, then again, then we're abdicating. I, I don't like the idea of us abdicating a lot of these things. I think there has to be some sort of process in which we are appro, even if it's in some cases a rubber stamp, that we're approving people to be on the search.
Trustee Watts?
Uh, Trustee Al Japni had his hand raised first.
So one other thing that worried me about just selecting certain groups, and I'm worried it would sway the panel in one way, so the selection would, would not be as objective. So I, I agree, as far as students, it should be open to any student. It shouldn't be, if we're saying the student council president, vice president, let's say that, but it would not be fair to all students. It would be limited to those two students. Same thing with committee members. People could recommend, from the board, me included, people that they want because of a certain agenda. And that's, I, I rather it's approved. I'd rather there's an approval process, because, you know, one of the challenges with having forty people or thirty people is the board members say is very limited, you know, in selecting the recommendations. You're only recommending what the, what the group does. And it might not be fair if you, if you don't vote on it, you know, and I, I see what Trustee Ammer said. You have to present people that would be, for example, the Henry, the P-12. I mean, how are we gonna select what person? Are we gonna go pick who we think is best, who's gonna follow our leads?
For that, that example's simple. That's the, that's the director that's involved with dual enrollment to Henry Ford College, and we know who that person is. That's a simple one.
So let's be specific then, if we're saying.
I don't wanna mention names tonight, but.
No, no, I mean, titles. If we're saying two students, let's say assistant, you know, the.
No, I, I'm okay with that, I just said, trying to put the committee together.
In the committee, like the recommendation by, by the board, what are we looking for? I mean, I don't want people bringing, you know, like, how are we, what's the criteria? Is there a criteria? Is there a criteria for? Is there a criteria for what the board selects?
Trustee Watts?
So, we're asking people to volunteer for this nebulous search that we don't have a search firm for, we haven't selected them yet, we don't know what their time commitment is, but we're gonna say, we want you to serve. I think we need to first, step number one, select a search firm. Step number two, give them our address and say, we would like you to look this over, or during our interview, look this over, where, what are we missing? Is this, you know, what are your thoughts, are, is it diverse? Who are the other suggestions, so that we do have a cross-reference of our community? And then, from there, say, okay, based on our search firm and the timeframe that they've given, and the amount of time that is each volunteer needs to dedicate, then we can say, here's what, we, we would like you to serve on this committee, and here's your time commitment. To ask people to commit to something that we don't even know what the time commitment yet is, is we're doing a disservice.
Just so I don't lose my thought, just so I don't lose my thought, trustee Watts, you said that we all agreed that forty's too much, then Chair Mosip said that I'd like to keep it under thirty, that's why I started jotting numbers down.
No, no, yeah.
Then the discussion went a different direction.
Right, no, no.
I think we need to, I said, twenty-four, let's stop right there, we'll revisit that, what we're doing.
And I think, yes, but I think.
I'm not saying we're gonna go right now and say, who wants to serve.
Correct.
I believe that we do need a timeline.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, I think at this point, it's a good start, but I don't think we can, I think we've done as much as we can right now.
But we do, we need to know how that mechanism would be.
Yeah.
Done as far as picking those seven individuals from the community members, or even.
That's a, we can, we can discuss this.
See, that could be the next meeting.
On yourselves, or next meeting.
Correct, that could be the next meeting, I'm just.
Trustee Eljamie, I'm gonna come back to you.
Oh, sir.
So, and this is directed at trustee Watts, when we ask to do, to be structured, we cannot defer to the search firm for everything as you states. Everything that we do, like, right now, when we select committee members as we're doing, we're trying to put structure in a foundation of what we wanna do. You continue to refer to, we need the, uh, 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 search firm to do this, and they have their responsibility and we have ours. To put structured, let me ask you this, because I keep hearing it too much, what is your definition? What deliverables are the search firm providing for us? Can you define those for us? Because, no, no, I, I, I'm asking, I'm asking, because you keep referring to them, is, we gotta wait for them, we gotta wait for them, even as we try to put structure on committee.
I didn't, I didn't say anything about waiting for them.
No, you mean the deliverables of what the search firm is to do for us.
Yeah.
I really would like that.
I, I can, I can share that, I'll send it to you through, because I.
No, no, I want.
Why, why would you, why would you ask me for that one? Because, like I said.
Because you keep, you keep telling us that we need to wait for the search firm, even as we try to put structure on the committee.
I didn't say anything about waiting, I said, we have a good draft.
You cannot continue to tell us to wait for the search firm, I, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I can, I can, because my suggestion.
Tell us what the deliverable, let me finish, is, what is your expectation, hold on a second.
Okay, here, I'll, I'll read it.
What is, yeah, what is your expectation of them?
Request for proposal.
That's from Stan Johnson's.
Scope of services, the board expects the principal consultant to, number one, provide expert consultation to the board of trustees, the director of human resources, and the board secretary regarding all aspects of the presidential search throughout the performance period, beginning with the establishment of a preliminary timeline through the, through to completion with an employment agreement is executed between the board and the presidential finalist. Number two, conduct public forums with the college stakeholders to identify the competencies and characteristics of candidates. Number three, assist the board in developing position qualifications and criteria. Number four, assist with position advertisements in appropriate state, national media for higher education. Number five, there are eleven of these, be knowledgeable of the higher education environment in the state of Michigan and nationwide in order to provide personal outreach and recruitment of highly qualified and diverse candidates who will thrive in southeast Michigan. Number six, provide first review of applicant curriculum vitae and resumes and forward to the presidential search committee. Number seven, assist the presidential search committee and clarify applications that best meet the criteria, pass position criteria and qualifications for a shortlist. Coordinate candidate's participation in the interview process, assist with the development of an interview format and candidate questions. Number eight, consult with the board secretary and college arrangements for meetings, interviews, campus visits, website, et cetera. Provider and candidates are responsible for their own travel arrangements. Any reimbursement will be made in accordance with the college travel reimbursement procedures. Number nine, debrief with the presidential search committee and/or the board. Number ten, evaluate candidates for serious consideration by verifying educational degrees, credentials, and employment records. Conduct a pre-employment background check of the finalists in accordance with the college policies and procedures. Number eleven, recruit additional qualified candidates if necessary or requested, that is under the scope of services. Proposal response, the provider's proposal must include understanding of scope of services, convey an understanding of the scope of services being requested, and describe what the provider can uniquely offer to the college. And I can move on, however, hold on, let me finish, so however, what I'm saying is the structure here is, I said, it's a, it's a good draft, and I said, when we interview the search firms, they can say, hey, you've got a great one, have you thought about X, Y, and Z? I am just asking them for their expert, hey, have we missed anybody? Because this is what they do, if they say, hey, you missed X, Y, and Z, let us know.
They search for candidates based on the qualification that we provide them. They provide us, they vet, when we said they vet a candidate, they look at their credential, they look at their background, they look at the, so their expertise is to find us the right candidates that we could review. So some things are outside their power, where we have to build structure, we cannot wait for the search firm on anything that we provide, if I misunderstood, but I keep hearing, let's wait for the search firm, they're a search firm to find us candidates, viable candidates that have been vetted out and have the right credential, and they meet the requirements of the college. That's where their responsibility is. As far as committee members, as far as everything else, that's something that we're building.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I wasn't saying about waiting for the search firm for this, I said, this was a good draft, number one.
You keep bringing it up, we gotta wait for the search firm, we gotta wait for the search firm.
I, I did not, I said, this is a great draft, number one, and while we're interviewing the search firms, why not take our structure and say, hey, what would you do here? Why not ask them for their expertise to give us an understanding, like, do we miss anybody? Have we thought anybody, like, do we need somebody from the state? I don't know, like, would, would we want that? Is that something that they would find helpful? But this is just while we're interviewing them, which could start next week.
It could.
That's, yeah.
But my thing is, as far as committee members, we know our communities very well, we know what the community, and, and there is history, you keep referring to history, is, that's the, the footprints that we should follow, history is only lessons learned, not something that we follow. So you follow history, lessons learned, to make sure that you do the right thing based on experiences that you learn from. But as far as the, I just wanna get the criteria of what a search firm does, is they find us candidates, everything else, it's, the structure is put on by the board.
Trustee Eljamie?
To, to me, like, when some, in something like this, you could do both, in other words, we could, we could totally sit here, and on August 25th, and say, this is what we think the search committee should look like, and we could even start the process of getting input from the community, you know, interest from people who wanna be on those things, and then still communicate with the search firm, say, look, this is what we're doing already, you think there's a big problem with this? Do you think, you know, you didn't give us their feedback, but we don't have to wait, that, this is, this is worth some of the frustration.
But you do need to give the people who are interested, a, a sense of what they're committing to.
Yes.
If we don't have a search firm there to say, hey, this is gonna be the timeline, these people don't know if they're committing to a, a, a meeting a month, a meeting a week, a meeting, a, you know.
Okay, that's, I understand, well, this leads me to my, to me, this could all be solved, if we make a commitment as an ad hoc committee, and we can make that commitment just by committing to it here, or if we have to do it through a motion, we can do it through a motion, that we are going to present the full board with a recommendation for a search firm on August 25th, instead of September 15th.
I will not put a timeframe on it, because you have, in the past, put motions out there with a drop dead date.
I have.
That have, yes, that have caught me off guard, and I, and I wasn't paying attention, that they've been inserted in other motions, and then it committed us, it committed us to when we had to have a special meeting for the interim appointment, because that was a drop dead date of, we were going to appoint by. I'm not, I, I do not want to commit to a drop dead date of when we are going to bring something before, because we don't know what could interfere with that process in the next three weeks.
Okay.
You could have, you could have firms that aren't available, at the times were available to interview.
So there's, there's, there's obviously no, like, repercussions if we don't do it by then, you know what I mean, like?
Yes, sir, that's when you make a motion.
Obviously, no, there isn't, obvi, obviously, things can happen, but we could all, we could also make, we could also make a motion that say, this is what, this is our, this is our goal, or this is what we wanna do, we're directing the ad hoc committee, now, if unforeseen circumstances happen, but are, are you saying that under no circumstances, we can have a recommendation by August 25th? Because, again, with the window.
No, I'm saying, I'm not gonna do it in a motion.
We have to extend the time.
So ju, so ju, so just so every. We have till 10:00?
No, not at, no, not at the college meeting.
We can say it soon in the morning if you guys want.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have, we don't have that here.
Just kidding.
No, we have to extend the time.
We have to, or we don't?
We have to.
Yes.
Nine thirty is for the college.
Nine thirty for the college?
You have to put a motion, I put a motion on the table to extend the meeting by fifteen minutes.
Support.
Motion by trustee Watts.
Wait, is fifteen minutes the longest?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Unfortunately, the bylaws may be.
Okay, second.
Policy chair.
Second.
Trustee Barry, second.
All right.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Uh, trustee DeBrozio.
Yes.
Trustee Zaher, yes. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Eljamie.
Yes.
Trustee Palichkov.
Yes.
Trustee Watts.
Yes.
Chair Mosip.
Yes.
So, what, what I was saying was, um, do you, the, just so everyone again understands, I know we said it a few times, the window for the RFP closes Friday, this Friday, August 8th, at 4:00 PM or 5:00 PM, Mr. Murray?
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, so, that means after 4:00 PM, nobody can submit an RFP, or a, a, a bid anymore. So, that means at 4:01, we can look at them, is that correct? At 4:01, we can look at them? Okay, sorry, at 4:01, you'll have them. Okay, great, so we could get them pretty quickly, and this, again, this is like a core job of ours, so we could look at them over the weekend, we could convene next week, however many times we need to convene, the, that, the meeting is not, our next scheduled meeting, is not for two weeks after the, after this next Monday, so August 20th, it's three weeks from yesterday. So, to me, in my mind, we have enough time to look at everything that we get on Friday, look at it over the weekend on our own, convene next week, a time or two, even convene the week after that, early in the week if we want to, and then discuss, talk to whatever firms we whittle it down to in our head that next week, and then make a recom, have a recommendation.
You're assuming they're gonna be available.
May I speak?
Who's gonna be available?
These firms.
Well, they're applying for, I, I, they're applying, I mean, if they're not available to talk to us pretty quickly, what are they, I mean, I think.
It has to be corny, it has to be, I, I think we need the chair to be the one directing this.
I, let's, let's see if, if that's even a realistic expectation of all the technicalities that we have to do after we get the proposal. We get, we get all of the proposals on August 8th, search, the ad hoc committee would have to meet and evaluate all of the proposals. Now, some proposals might not meet the criterias that we already put, so they, they won't be qualified for whatever, and we do have a rubric that I, I would say.
Okay, may I speak?
Yeah.
Okay, let, alright, so if all of the, Friday at 4:00, I would say, it is realistic, it is not realistic to be August 25th. We have vacations, I have, I have children, like, I can't just drop everything. However, I will do my, my, my best of good faith to try to schedule however many, because the other thing is, it may not be the August 25th date, but doesn't necessarily mean we have to wait for the next college date as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we can have a special meeting where we come and approve the search firm, it could just be five minutes of, we approve, so it may not be in August, it may be September, I don't know what it is, so I think to say August 25th would be great in an ideal world, but again, we have jobs, life responsibilities, and again.
If we don't know how many we're gonna get.
Coordinating that with, with the search firms, I'm not quite sure what that would look like, so I think, I will say, in public, good faith of saying how many we can get done in the course of time, where we can maybe lump up some interviews together, and if it falls, maybe between August 25th and the college meeting, then we call a special meeting if everybody's okay with that.
Trustee Eljamie?
Just, to be fair, based on experience, it, it does, the process takes longer than a couple weeks, if you have twelve of them, and you have to interview them, well, review their, their questions, and you might have to have clarifying questions or anything like that, so that there is, if we're talking twelve, if we're talking, looking at their information and trying to, you have to really provide some dedicated time. So I would, I would go with tentatively the 25th, based on how things go. I, I think it's really hard to say firm 25th, because I do think it does take, in my experience, just to get everybody on, available, to get the vendors available, to then, and, and, and maybe, there's a clarifying question that I have, is there any time where you have to ask for clarifying questions from the, from the, the people that bid, from the search committee?
Search firms.
Or a search firm?
Now, would that be part of your interview process?
And I think the other thing for the board is circulating the metrics and questions that we've had in 2017, so all of you can look at it and say, okay, here's what I want updated, here's what I would like to be, you know, what I would like to have added there, so that everybody then would be able to have time to look at that and say, okay, I'm good with this, right? Or, hey, can we change X, Y, and Z? This is important to me that we ask this. I think that's the other thing as well, is I don't wanna interview any search firm until we have a comprehensive list that all seven of us make sure that our voices are on there. I think that's step number one.
So how, how does that happen?
I would, I would circulate in an email the metrics from 2017, and then if you have any ideas or questions or comments directed to me, and then, once it is a final draft, I'll send it out, and again, if there's something that was missed, reply to the email.
So, I believe we're in agreement that we can look at this process, look at some dates that we can expedite, for example, the August 8th to 20th evaluation proposals, maybe that can be cut down to a week, and then interview with finalists the week before, and we can call for a special meeting, not wait until September 15th.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I agree, I think if we have it down, I don't think we should, we necessarily have to wait until September 15th.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so I believe we are in good shape, as far as, now, we have twenty-four individuals, trustee Barry, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, tw, twenty-four tentative, and also tentative schedule as far as to expedite the evaluation of the proposals, and the interview of the finalists, and we expect a special meeting, if it doesn't happen by the 25th, to approve the, the search firm, and also, on the 25th, I would hope that we would have the, the process for selecting the individuals who will serve on the committee ironed out. I, I will work to make sure that we, we take those profiles and individuals, and work with administration to develop some kind of a interest form that could be posted online for those individuals who fit the criteria to apply to be part of the search committee.